And we can get started. First on our agenda is we have a new commissioner on board, and his name is David Price. And we would like to hear a short story about you, David.[15.23][15.23](Laughter). A short story.[17.64][17.64](Laughter).
My name's David Price. I'm a 14-year resident of Lachlan Springs Conservation Overlay District. I'm an architectural historian professionally and have been involved with historic preservation in Nashville for several years now. Served on the Board of Historic Nashville and currently on the Board of the Bell's Bend Conservation Corridor. And I'm glad to be here. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We appreciate your time and your efforts to this board. Thank you. Robin, I think we -- do we have any changes on the agenda?
Yes, if you would. Item F, if we could remove that and from the consent agenda and put that at the end of the agenda. The applicant has a request to speak in about that. And then H and I, if we could move those both to the end. The reason being that at the time that the printed mailed notice went out, we weren't sure where we were meeting, and we gave a different location. So that gives anyone who goes to the other location plenty of time to get here. Mr. Alexander is there with maps and information. And then, once he leaves to come over here, there'll still be a notice on the door. So that just gives anyone time who did not hear about it an opportunity to join us. And 922 Lawrence, if we could remove that from the agenda altogether, as they made some changes that meant we could issue an administrative permit. And 2801-27, the applicant has requested to defer.
Okay, Robin has presented the adjusted agenda. Do we have a motion to accept that?
No.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, and all in favor, please. Thank you. We have adopted the agenda for today. Are there any council members present today?
Can you turn the volume up? You don't hear a thing.
Okay. Are there any council members here?
No sound at all.
The mics aren't listening. The mics are for recording. They don't necessarily mic the room. We don't have any control over the room volume.
Okay, we will just speak a little bit louder, then. Okay? All right. Thank you. I think we may have some council members later on. All right. Next on the agenda is approval of the minutes in May.
I move for approval.
Motion? Second?
Second.
Second, all in favor? Okay, thank you. For each case, there will be a public hearing. We ask that the applicant keeps their presentation to under 10 minutes. They may reserve two minutes as a rebuttal. We ask that the public keep their comments to two minutes unless they are representing an organization or group, and they may have five minutes. Pursuant to the provision of Section 2.68.030 of the Metropolitan Code of Laws, notice is hereby given that a final hearing before this commission is appealable to the Chancery Court of Davidson County or the Circuit Court of Davidson County. This is statutory writ of certiorari. You are advised to seek your own independent legal counsel to ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements are met. You should also seek independent legal advice regarding the applicability of the writ of certiorari to the specific decision of the Historic Zoning Commission. Items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda. And we shall start.
There we go. Okay. First, we have 1506 Shelby Avenue. This is new construction on an existing outbuilding. 3629 Richland Avenue, new construction, infill in an outbuilding, and a setback determination. 1232 Howard Avenue, new construction of an addition. 1813 Holly Street, new construction of an addition and an outbuilding. And then, 1239 Sixth Avenue North has been moved to the regular agenda and will be heard. Staff recommends approval of the items on the consent agenda with the applicable conditions, finding the applications to meet the design guidelines of their respective overlays.
Thank you, Jenny.
Madam Chairman, a move for approval of the consent agenda.
There is a motion? Is there a second? There's a second, all in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Thank you.
No one can hear. There's no volume.
No, sir, there is no volume in the room. If you can't hear, please move up to the front.
Can you just turn the volume up?
I don't have a volume to turn up. So if you can't hear, just move on up.
This one gets to that.
Who's presenting 1431? Robin?
It's me. Just give me just a second.
Okay, sure.
Sorry about that. This is for the Dr. Cleo Miller House, also known as Ivy Hall, located at 1431 Shelton Avenue, Nashville. It's listed in the National Register of Historic Places under Criterion C for its association with Nashville architect Edwin Keeble and as an excellent example of the Tudor Revival style in Nashville. More history of the building is in your report and, of course, in the National Register nomination. There was a typo in the report, so just to be clear, the project meets A, not B, but A5 of Section 17.36-120 based on the fact that it's listed in the National Register of Historic Places. Staff suggests that MHCC recommend a council approval of historic landmark overlay for 1431 Shelton, finding that it meets Section 17.36-120A5, and to use the Landmark Design Guidelines as well as the Inglewood Place Neighborhood Conservation Design Guidelines to guide future alterations, finding that the design guidelines meet the Secretary of Interior standards. This one, just for your information, is also being tracked along with a neighborhood landmark, and it's a little confusing because of the name. But neighborhood landmarks are not a preservation tool. It is a planning tool, so we will not be able to answer any questions about that that could affect the use. We can only, obviously, answer questions about the historic landmark overlay, and, of course, your purview is about the historic landmark overlay.
Thank you, Robin.
I don't believe the council member is here.
We will open for public hearing. Is anyone here to speak on this particular project? Please state your name and your address.
Did you hear me all right? Okay. I'd like to introduce Scott Morton with Smith G. Studio to explain the details of our application. Thank you, and I'm available to answer any questions you may have of me.
Just one moment. Since your mic wasn't on, just please tell us your name again and your address.
My name is Rachel McCann, and I live at 1431 Shelton Avenue.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. I appreciate your time. My name is Scott Morton with Smith G. Studio. I reside at 1005 North 14th Street in East Nashville. I'm here to help answer some of the questions, helping the homeowner navigate the process. As Robin mentioned, this is kind of a two-step application at the planning level, which includes, at the council member's request, an application to voluntarily put the property in the Historic Landmark Overlay District. The home is currently in the Inglewood Conservation Overlay, so the neighbors within this community worked hard to establish that district many years ago. The home is privileged to be part of that district and mentioned within that document and guidelines as, you know, obviously, a great asset to the community. This application would take that to the next level in regards to historic oversight of the property. And so, there are three different levels of historic overlays, with the existing conservation overlay being the lowest. I'm not going to repeat everything that staff said, but this would voluntarily bring the property into the highest level of historic review and oversight from staff and from this commission. So, any future alterations to the property, to the exterior, or any new additions or new construction on the site, would have to come before this body for approval and consideration in a future date. Council member we've been working with hand-in-hand throughout this process, he could not be here today. We had a meeting with him last week with the community. We're having another follow-up, second meeting, next week with the council member as well. And he is very supportive of this application and looks forward to moving it forward at the council level. I want to, you know, briefly explain, and I guess, Robin, maybe a question to you relative to your comments about the historic overlay. My understanding is, and I want to recognize that this is a two-step approach at the Planning Commission, and so we're here today to talk about the historic overlay, but we are also preparing what's called a Neighborhood Landmark Overlay District. It gets very confusing because it's kind of a similar terminology, but that is a separate application that we've already filed with the Metro Planning Commission. So, this is step one of just establishing the historic overlay. We are also on the agenda for the Planning Commission next week to consider both items. So, I'm happy to answer what I'm able to answer in regards to the application process and any questions you may have. As far as community engagement, the application, we have met with the Inglewood Community Association, presented at one meeting and attended multiple meetings with that group. In addition, we deferred our last month's meeting, so at the councilman's request, to have additional community meeting with some of the area, the local residents that are on the street and adjacent blocks. We had a great, well-attended meeting last week with majority support of what we're doing on the property in support of this application. We invited people to come to the site, and so they could tour the grounds and tour the property and really understand, not only the existing conditions, but what a great asset it is to the community and wants to continue to be stewards to that community. So, after that deferral, we are now here before you today to present our request for the Historic Landmark Overlay. We have multiple opportunities for additional community involvement. We have planned a second community meeting to talk specifically about the Planning Commission application. That meeting is set for next week, June 26th, at the -- sorry, trying to think of the location. I believe it's the Inglewood Library. Please pardon me. After that, we also have an additional opportunity for the community to have an input at the Metro Planning Commission's public hearing, which is scheduled currently for June 27th, and then, again, at the public hearing for Metro Council, assuming that the council member, you know, moves it forward as scheduled, on August 7th. And so, we're excited that the community has so far been very supportive of this process. We are excited about this first initial step and getting the ball going on this application and the associated landmark application. I'm happy to answer any other questions you may have, but I would like to preserve two minutes to speak afterwards. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Please come forward and say your name and address, please.
Is it time to speak against the plan or only in favor?
We are open public hearing, so you are welcome to give comment.
My name is Matthew Bond. My address is 3519 Golf Street, just a stone's throw from Ivy Hall. I'm afraid that much of what Mr. Morton just said is incorrect. We have not had any community meetings. At the gathering that was held last Thursday, it was a pep rally by the owners of Ivy Hall under the banner "Save Our Studios." It had a small population of only 30, only 25 of whom were neighbors, and no one from Historic Zoning was there to answer questions, no one from Planning was there to answer questions. We had been assured by the council member that this would not be on the agenda until we had a community meeting. We have the neighbors, one of which is I, one of whom is I, have worked very hard to set up a meeting. We have one for the 26th, in which both Historic Zoning members and Planning members have been invited. So, and that was the time for the entire community. I have announced it on our Next Door page. We've printed flyers that we're going to hand out, and that is the time for everyone to ask questions of both Historic Zoning and Planning. So, I realize it's probably not my place, but I would love to see this deferred until the next meeting, when we could finally have the community meeting that we were supposed to have.
Okay. Thank you. Please come forward and say your name and address. Anyone else who is speaking on this project, please stand in line, and so that we can move forward with that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. My name is Cheryl Bretts, and I've lived in Nashville most of my life. I don't live in Nashville right now, but I've lived there most of my life, and I lived at Ivy Hall for 11 years. I worked with Dr. Carol Van West in having it put on -- he was so kind to help us have it put on the National Register of Historic Places. I became a preservationist when they were going to tear down the Ryman, and that was back a long time ago. And since then, I have planted hundreds of trees in Inglewood. I support everything I can with Historic Preservation in the neighborhood. I have hundreds of friends that live there. I am close friends of the people that live there now, and they're the kindest, most honest people I've ever met, and I think they really care about the property and want to preserve it, and I am in full support and do anything I can to help.
Thank you very much. We will close public hearing if there's no one else.
We will close. Sorry.
Oh, yes, sure. If the commission has questions, would that include his two minutes? Yeah, okay.
No, I would just -- I'm Rachel McCann, 1431 Shelton Avenue. I would like to state that the neighborhood meeting we just had was indeed a neighborhood meeting. Mr. Bond knew about the meeting time and place as soon as we did and had plenty of opportunity to publicize on his own. We flyered 60 adjacent homes, per the councilman's request, before the meeting, and the characterization of it as a pep rally is disingenuous.
And furthermore, we followed the request by the councilman for that community meeting. We followed his direction on the notification. He asked us to notify the Inglewood Board President, which we did, and it was announced through that group, and he also asked us to send out flyers for all the adjacent owners. And so, we followed all the protocols that were directed to us as the applicant that the councilman requested of us. And so, we are happy to, as Mr. Bond stated, have an additional meeting to talk further about the zoning application, which we have voluntarily accepted. He has organized a meeting next week. We will be there in attendance to go over, have further discussions with the community, and we're glad to do so. But I do want to just make it clear that this initial step will not impact any of the zoning overlay decisions that are related to the neighborhood -- I'm sorry. Yes, the Neighborhood Landmark Overlay District, which is the application at the Planning Commission. So, the application that's before you today will not have any impact to, I think, the concerns that Mr. Bond may have related to that other application. This application today, you know, again, only is a voluntary option for the homeowner as far as the application to put further restrictions on their property. And so, thank you for your consideration. I'm happy to answer your questions.
Okay, thank you. Just remind ourselves also that this is just a recommendation to the council, so we're not making any decisions on whether yea or nay. Closing public hearing and commission discussion.
I've just got a clarification from, I guess, staff for the benefit of interested parties here, is that this landmark overlay, we're reviewing whether this property is eligible and meets the designation for such. Has nothing to do with use, has absolutely nothing to do with surrounding properties other than what might normally take place if an application came through for an addition or some other alteration. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Madam Chairman, as this action of this body is not a binding action, but is merely a recommendation to the council, and as they have additional community meetings set up between now and the August council meeting, I recommend that we support the staff recommendation and move for approval.
There's been a motion?
Second.
There's a second? All in favor?
Aye.
There's none, nay? Okay, it passes for approval, for recommendation.
All right. So, the next item on the agenda is 2018 10th Avenue South. This is a request to construct a new single-family residence at 2018 10th Avenue South. This case was deferred from the May meeting at the request of the applicant. Since then, the applicant has worked with staff to address concerns about the scale of the proposed infill. So, the plan before you meets the design guidelines for height, scale, setbacks, and rhythm of spacing, materials, roof shape, and orientation. As proposed, the infill is oriented to 10th Avenue South. Staff recommends that vehicular access be limited to the alley and that a walkway connecting the front porch to the public sidewalk be shown on the site plan. The site plan shows a footprint for an outbuilding, however, that is not included with this application. So, the proposed house is one and a half stories, but reads more as a single-story house at the front. The form and height of the infill are compatible with the surrounding houses. Here is the left side elevation, which will face Benton Avenue. The house will be approximately 87 feet deep. Staff finds that while the house is somewhat deeper than what you would see for a historic house with an addition in this area, it could be appropriate, given the narrowness of the lot and the predominantly single-story form of the infill. And so, here's the right side elevation and the rear elevation. And here are some context photos of historic homes in the vicinity. The photo to the left is located to the right of this house, and the photo on the right is located three doors down. Both of these houses are contributing historic homes. And two more photos, both of these houses are further down the street to the right, about mid-block, and both are also contributing. So, in conclusion, staff recommends approval of the infill with conditions, and the conditions include that the finished floor height be consistent with the finished floor height of adjacent historic houses, to be verified by MHCC staff in the field; two, that the front setback be consistent with buildings to either side, also to be verified by staff in the field; three, the site plan shall incorporate a walkway leading from the front porch to the public sidewalk; four, vehicular access shall be from the alley; five, staff shall review and approve all materials prior to purchase and installation; and six, that the HVAC will be located behind the house or on either side beyond the midpoint of the house. So, with these conditions, staff finds that the project meets the waiverly Belmont Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay Design Guidelines.
Thank you, Melissa. Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Would you like to come forward and speak? Name and address, please.
Hello. William Smallman. I live at 1512 Paris Avenue, and there's really not a lot to say on this one. It's pretty straightforward. We worked with staff. They gave us some direction. We followed it, and everything went fairly smooth. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Not at this time.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, closed public hearing, commission discussion.
Clarification for staff, and I don't want to read too far into this, but right the site plan, which is the last item on the evaluation, shows dimensions about a 55-foot setback from property line, I guess, maybe that's the property line. If you look at the overhead, just so we're given the direction to the applicant of the adjacent house, or the next one would be across the street, and they all face in a different direction, it looks like the house that's right next door sort of is not in line with the others. Is that -- was there any discussion or consideration for that? Is it appropriate to put it right in line with that one? It's sort of -- it looks like it jumps around significantly.
Right. Well, typically, we look at whatever is next door, and in most cases, you're not looking at a corner lot, so you would, you know, try to find an average or someplace that would work between two historic houses. Since this is on a corner, we did look at the immediate, the house immediately to the right, which is a contributing historic house.
Sure. Okay. So, that would be the direction that the applicant would give? Okay.
Anything else, Commissioners?
Given that the applicant's in agreement with all the conditions, I recommend for approval with the conditions within the staff recommendation.
Is there a motion? Okay, there's a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any none opposed? Thank you. It's passed.
Okay. Next is 2224 Blair Boulevard. The house at 2224 Blair Boulevard is a circa 1930 bungalow that contributes to the Hillsborough West End Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay. This application is for the construction of an addition inclusive of an attached garage. As your report indicates, partial demolition will occur on the rear and side elevations of the house. The existing garage will be demolished as well. Staff finds this work to be appropriate. Staff has worked with this property owner for several months, as they have worked to design an appropriate addition. We feel that the plan before you today, while large, is nearly appropriate. It reflects the requested insets and keeps the addition narrower and shorter than the existing house. Further, the addition does not more than double the existing footprint. In our discussions with the applicant, we agreed that, given the relatively shallow lot, an attached garage may be appropriate in this instance if it was kept to one story and subordinate to the house. Here you can see the west elevation. Staff finds that the proposed two-story garage with its wide wall dormers and increased bridge height creates too much additional massing and overwhelms the historic house. Here's the east elevation. Note that the garage eaves are significantly higher than the main house, further increasing the perception of height. Staff recommends that the second floor above the garage be removed. In plan, removing the square footage would essentially eliminate the bonus room. Staff finds that with the removal of this square footage, which would include the elimination of the wide wall dormers, the overall massing would meet the design guidelines. Aside from the issues of the wall dormers and the garage height, staff finds the proposal to be largely appropriate. It meets the guidelines in terms of location, removable, basic roof form, proportion and rhythm of openings and setbacks. The materials have not been indicated, but can be approved administratively. In conclusion, staff recommends approval of the project with the following conditions: The second level of the attached garage shall be removed to create a more appropriately massed addition for the historic home. Staff shall approve the following materials prior to purchase and installation: brick, cladding, roofing material, trim, terrace material, garage door, pedestrian door, and windows. And the HVAC shall be located on the rear elevation or on the side elevation beyond the midpoint of the house. And just as a final note, I did meet with the property owners yesterday and saw a revision of the design before you, in which that massing over the garage was moved to over the family room. Staff's intent with the first condition was for the massing to be reduced, not relocated. So, if the commission approves this application, we would request that you provide some clear direction on whether the massing can be relocated or whether you want it removed, and also whether stepping out wider than the historic house would be considered appropriate. And I know this is kind of a complicated one, and I condensed it, so if you have any questions, happy to answer them, and I know the applicant's here as well. Questions now?
Give us a moment.
Sure.
Thank you, Jenny.
Good afternoon. Adam LaFevere here on behalf of the applicant. We're down to the massing issue.
Please give us your address.
My personal address is 1702 Sweetbrier. Down to the massing issue, as the Commissioners are aware, there are no clear guidelines as to massing in the historic guidelines, but Historic does rely on a policy which frowns upon any addition which doubles the square footage of the existing residence. Here, the proposed addition is only a 46% increase of the -- pardon me, not the square footage, the footprint. Here, the proposed addition is only 46% increase in the footprint, so well below the doubling policy that Historic applies. There was a note of the raised roof line of the garage still from the front of the property. You're not going to be able to see the raised roof line. It is actually below the roof line of the primary structure. So, we would ask that the staff approve the plan as submitted. A little background about my client, he's been nominated for seven historical awards, won three of them, so he's well familiar with the historic requirements and works in concert with Historic frequently. He looked to purchase this house in November of 2017. Prior to his purchase, he met with Historic staff to ensure that he could do with the house what he proposed. He was frowns upon any addition which doubles the square footage of the existing residence. Here, the proposed addition is only a 46% increase of the, pardon me, not the square footage, the footprint. Here, the proposed addition is only 46% increase in the footprint, so well below the doubling policy that Historic applies. There was a note of the raised roofline of the garage still from the front of the property. You're not going to be able to see the raised roofline. It is actually below the roofline of the primary structure. So, we would ask that the staff approve the plan as submitted. A little background about my client, he's been nominated for seven historical awards, won three of them, so he's well familiar with the historic requirements and works in concert with Historic frequently. He looked to purchase this house in November of 2017. Prior to his purchase, he met with Historic staff to ensure that he could do with the house what he proposed. He was advised that he could, so moved forward, purchased the property, submitted plans. Those plans had suggested revisions, so my client, through his architect, made the suggested revisions and submitted the plans accordingly. Then, after those plans were submitted, some more requested revisions were made. So, reluctantly, my client went back to his architect, changed the plans again, and submitted them, only to have more revisions requested. So, my client went through three different rounds with recommendations, all of which were changed, resubmitted, only to have more recommendations imposed. So, again, we'd ask that the plans be approved as submitted with the requesting massing. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to leave some of your time for rebuttal?
I would, please.
Okay, thank you. All right, open public hearing. Anyone here to speak on this project? All right, closed public hearing, commissioners' discussion.
I suppose I would like to hear from the applicant's attorney about which plan you want to move forward with. Do you want to move forward with the moving of the items above the garage?
Candidly, we would move forward with either. We would prefer the addition to be above the garage, for the reasons stated, that the massing in the guidelines is appropriate with the plan that's proposed. But in the event we're forced to move forward with the second option, we'd be willing to do that. However, the first option with the addition above the garage is greatly preferable for a number of reasons. One, it doesn't expand to the side any. Again, from the street, completely intact, no raised roofline, no changes from the front perspective.
Architects?
Question, I think, for staff, because I'm looking at the application. Was the additional information received in time for?
The revision?
Or the revision, whatever the thing is we're talking about, but I'm not sure what we're talking about.
I only mentioned that because... You have not received anything, so we recommend that you stick with the application before you.
Okay.
And, you know, that is part of your rules of order, is that you won't accept new information at the meeting. If you did want to accept that new information, assuming the applicant has it, you would need to vote on that.
Just clarifying whether it was, how new it was and whether it'd gotten here in time. Thanks.
Yes, it's not in front of you. I only mentioned it because our recommendation was that it be approved with the condition that that massing be removed from above the garage, which they have done in this revision, but the massing is still there. They just relocated it. So, if you do approve, ask for our conditions. I just wanted a clarification about whether you wanted that massing gone, or if you thought it would be okay to relocate it.
Noted. Thank you.
Just a little clarification as well, Jenny.
Sure.
On page 16 of the report, there was a statement about the wide dormers in the rear inappropriate.
Yes.
Is that part of your recommendation as well, or should we include that in the recommendation?
Well, our recommendation was that the massing be removed, the second story of the garage be removed. If it goes, those dormers go.
Got you. Okay, just clarification. Thank you.
Can I throw out a question then? Discussion about attached garage that's not typical. Comments on that, please?
You know, we have had situations like this before, when there's a short lot and a big building program to be located on that lot. It has been, in some cases, deemed to be appropriate for there to be an attached garage. It eliminates the 20-foot required space between the main house and the garage. I think that they have done a nice job with putting this plan together. I like a lot of the elements of this. It does respect the original house. I do concur with staff that I think the element over the garage makes it heavier in the rear as an inappropriate scale in massing. The other thing is, that's one of the tightest, hardest alleys that I've ever seen, and I think, you know, everything along that alley is low and nothing like this that I've been able to notice. And so, I would concur with staff recommendations on this, but be open to comments by the other commissioners.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm looking at the staff report as well, where it shows the original house, and then, you know, what's going to be taken out, you know, which reduces that. And then, just that east elevation, both east and west, you know, I know from, even if it doesn't raise above the original structure, you know, from the rear north elevation, it just reads to be a very large back of the house. So, I concur with Commissioner Stewart on that.
May I ask a question of staff, too? Can you point to the page in the report that discusses massing and design guidelines?
Sure. It's kind of, so the massing we do on height and scale, so it would be page 13, where we talk about that?
Thank you.
To move us forward, I don't have disagreement with the discussion that's moved forward. I think it just sort of, you kind of, as the addition moves back, you're running out of real estate, so an attached garage makes sense, but then to sort of double down on top of that is, I certainly can, I'm convinced by the staff's recommendation, I think.
Would anyone like to make a motion, please?
And just for your request, Jenny, if it was, if this massing was, instead of taken away as requested by staff and as we seem to kind of feel is needed and moved onto the side, you know, that would be a different approach, but if it, I mean, I would say if it made it wider than the original house, which I think Jenny might have mentioned, you know, again, we're not looking at it, but I don't think that would be something that I would be comfortable with if that were to come back next month or something as a revision or as a new application. So, that's just maybe a little guidance for the applicant and staff from my perspective. And, you know, I think, if we think it's too much now in the back, I think we'd be uncomfortable if it was just moved to the side and then, again, made wider than the original house, so.
Well, I just don't feel like on the movement that I have enough of a picture of it, and I was wondering if it would be appropriate to defer this until we get more information on the...
Well, the applicant would need to be the one to defer. My understanding is they would like a vote on this particular design.
Okay.
I only brought it up because I know, because they did show me a revision yesterday, I know the direction they're thinking. Staff didn't feel that it was appropriate, and I just didn't want them to have to wait another month. If we already know that you just feel like this much is too much massing, then that's constructive feedback for them to have, and we can move us along.
And also, our charge is to look at what we have in front of us, so I think we should focus on that and go from here.
And I'll add, while we can give context clues, I guess, to the applicant, they're certainly able to present to us as much or as many things as they would like to, and we'll consider those carefully, as will the staff. On any future application, I guess that is. We're not, because we can't see it, we don't know what it is, it is difficult to say, but I, those points noted, it's a lot on the lot, if you will.
Okay.
So, with that in mind, I will move that we approve this application with staff recommendations for guidelines.
There is a motion?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed?
All right, commissioners, the next item on the agenda is 2517 Blair Boulevard. It is a one and a half story circa 1932 brick bungalow in the Hillsborough West End Conservation Zoning Overlay. The application is to increase the height of the existing garage and add a one and a half story to the existing garage. In April 2018, MHCC disapproved a proposal to construct a full second story on top of the existing garage, so have now returned with a reduced size for the extra addition to the top of the building. Staff is recommending disapproval of this proposal as well for two reasons. First, the existing outbuilding does not meet the base zoning setbacks on the left side, and increasing the height and scale of the outbuilding increases the nonconformity of the setbacks. Second, staff has concerns about the roof forms on the side facades. The date of construction of the existing outbuilding is not known, but it could be the same structure that appears in the circa 1932 Sanborn map. We're not sure, it's possible, but there was an outbuilding in a similar location around 1932. As mentioned earlier, the existing garage does not meet the base zoning setbacks. For the outbuildings of the size, base zoning requires a five-foot side setback, and the commission has tried to stick to that five-foot side setback for construction of new outbuildings in overlays. This outbuilding, it's skewed, so it is between one foot and two foot, eight feet from the side property line there. The addition to the outbuilding will increase the scale of the outbuilding from one story to one and a half stories, and will increase the height of the structure from approximately 16 feet to 22 feet. Staff finds that increasing the height of the outbuilding from one story to one and a half stories, and from approximately 16 feet tall to 22 feet tall, increases the nonconformity of the side setbacks and is not appropriate. Here are the side elevations and the rear elevation. The two dormers do meet the design guidelines, however, staff has concerns about the double gable form on the right and left elevations. The connector between the two gables give the appearance of more of a two-story form, which staff finds to not be appropriate, since this is behind a one and a half story house. Before I conclude, I wanted to show the 1957 Sanborn map for this block. You can see that there were many outbuildings that sat near, even on the side and rear property lines, but all of these are just one story. There aren't any that are one and a half stories, so, you know, typically, outbuildings, even when they sat close to the side property lines, historically, were really just one story in height, even though we allow taller, we like those to meet the base zoning setbacks. So, again, staff is recommending disapproval for two reasons. First, the existing outbuilding does not meet the base zoning setbacks on the left side, and second, that increases the nonconformity of the setbacks. And second, the staff has concern about the roof form on the side elevations. So, staff has recommended disapproval of the addition to the outbuilding, finding that its roof form and setbacks do not meet Section 2BH of the Hillsborough West End Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay. I think the applicant is, I think, the applicant is here, if you have questions.
Thank you, Melissa. Applicant, please.
I've also prepared visually on a USB, if possible. It's just a PDF. My name's Brad Van Russell. I'm with the architect on the project. I personally reside at 819 18th Avenue South. And just wait a second for the PDF. Melissa? Just use this.
Yeah, question.
So, as Melissa stated, there's two issues that staff has with our proposed addition, so I'd like to address them separately. First, I'll speak about the setback issues, and we concur with the staff on the numbers that exist, but we still believe our addition is appropriate within the neighborhood, because if you take a look, as she mentioned, at the historic maps, that there's quite a few outbuildings that historically exist, pushed into the rear back corner of a lot, so it's not historically uncommon to see this. Also, as mentioned, specifically on our lot, either this outbuilding or previous outbuilding did already exist here, and to quote the code, "Setback requirements didn't exist when our historic districts developed, so existing conditions sometimes require a little leeway in setbacks required by codes to help with new construction fit in with the neighborhood." That's pulled directly from the code. Furthermore, if we look at current metro maps with the current neighborhood, you can see that there's actually a few more existing outbuildings that are historically documented right around the area and in the neighborhood. So, if you consider this, along with the fact that we're not proposing a new outbuilding, we're simply adding on to an existing one in an existing area, we're not changing where it's going. We believe that no additional harm is being done, and this was not appear uncommon or inappropriate within the neighborhood. Secondly, I'll address the issue of the connector between the double gable. As the staff said, they find it inappropriate because it appears to be a two-story reform behind a one and a half story primary structure, but I'd like to remind the staff that elevation is purely kind of diagram, not diagrammatic, but it's used for documentation. It's never really a true perspective you'll get in reality. So, when viewed from a more realistic view, kind of the perspective on the side, you can see that the primary roof structure is the double gable. It is more of a one and a half story roof structure, and that connector is more secondary to that and pulled back and much less predominant. And additionally, after receiving the comments from the staff, we did go ahead and kind of pull the ridge height down a little bit more to further reduce the impact, to try to work with the commission a little bit, just to further reduce that visual impact of that. And I'll also point out that the two facades that that connector is visible from are the side facades, so the only time that those will be viewed would be from the neighbors directly adjacent to the property, and we haven't received any comment or complaints from them. And therefore, from a street perspective, you're still going to get just the front facade, which is purely one and a half story, and so, from a neighborhood context, you're only ever going to have a read of a one and a half story building. So, overall, we believe that despite the concerns presented by the staff, this addition would still be appropriate within the neighborhood, and I can answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you. Just give us a moment, we may call you back.
Absolutely. Oh, and I'd like to reserve any time for rebuttal, if needed.
Okay, maybe we should keep your thumb drive in for a minute.
Yeah, absolutely.
Just in case we have questions. Okay, open public hearing. Anyone here? If not, we will close public hearing, and we will have commission discussions.
I have a question for staff. This is, I think, related mostly to the setback issue, which is, is this, this is a daddoo?
No, it is not a daddoo. This neighborhood is owned, single-family, so...
Not possible.
Not likely. I'm...
Right. I'm a little curious as to not allowing, or well, it seems punitive to work within an existing footprint, which normally might be more appropriate than having a larger footprint of a building, and that the setback, I don't want to, it seems punitive to lean on the setback issue too much, although in looking at this, it's kind of, it's a two-story, two-story building with a steeply sloped roof. It's leaning as much toward that, if not more, than it is a one and a half story, and that roof form, while very well done, is, doesn't relate to the house, which has more lower sloping roof form, so. But I was curious if a side addition, because this sits out from the house, would be something that might be considered more appropriate, or, and I know the applicant isn't putting that before us, but I think certainly in consideration of what's an appropriate setback and whether more would be permissible on this footprint, is that...
They have pretty much maxed out their footprint. I think they're about 740 some square feet, and we would allow 750 square feet, so adding on to it also would meet our design guidelines. Yeah.
Yeah. And so, for that reason, I think I would consider, purely on setback, that's punitive to the applicant, just purely considering that, but I don't disagree with, certainly with the other portions of the analysis from staff.
Actually, the way I interpreted that more so was, not so much the setback, but because of the two-story form, sort of increased that disapproval.
That's not lost, and I think if you turn the form towards the street, it probably would elicit a similar response, I think, from the staff. would elicit a similar response, I think, from the staff in their analysis, or not be the staff, perhaps this commission, if you take it and turn it 90 degrees, so it's not as offensive to, maybe perceived as offensive to the neighbor that you would run into problems in the other direction.
Yeah, good point. And also because the reform is not contrasting greatly, but it's not as similar to the historical house.
I think it is contrasting greatly.
Yeah. Yeah, I, yeah, I, I mean, yeah, as Commissioner Mosley said, I mean, I do have a, you know, I'm going between, that is the existing garage, you know, if you build a little on it, you know, that's where the setback is, and that's where it was, because it was before, so punitive measure, but then at the same time, you know, when these were originally built, as originally built, they were just small outbuildings, not trying to be two-story living space up top, dadu or not, but you know, usable space up top, above a two-car garage. So I think just, you know, the need for more space has just given us these larger and larger structures that they weren't intended to be when they were very close to original setback, or original property lines. So that, in addition to, just, it reads to me, as a two-story as well, I agree with staff, you know, I like the front elevation and the rear elevations, but that, the right and left, you know, with this person standing there even on the presentation, it's just a very tall structure, and that's going to be up against one foot from the property line. So that's my opinion on this one.
You know, we can't approve part of a project, but we can give some preferences or opinions as far as the, as far as the massing. Like Commissioner Mosley, I think that the existence of the current property line and the footprint is something that we have looked at in the past and have sometimes found some leeway with, especially if they're reusing this existing structure versus demolishing and rebuilding. However, I do find that the roof form does contrast greatly with the house and with the roof forms in the neighborhood, and agree with staff recommendations on that. Based on that, I'd like to move for the disapproval of this, based on the staff recommendation.
There's a motion?
A second.
There's a second? All in favor?
All.
Okay. The disapproval for that project passes.
Yes.
While we're waiting for you to pull that up, I just want to have public comment that the council member, Catherine Murphy, gave us her opinion.
Yes, Kathleen Murphy, they should, obviously should have a copy of it in front of them. She provided some comment late this afternoon or late this morning, so it's before you. So 4122 Aberdeen Road is a circa 1940 brick Tudor-style home that contributes to historic character of the Cherokee Park Neighborhood Conservation Zoning overlay. In March of 2016, MHCC staff issued an administrative permit to construct a 20-foot by 22-foot one-story outbuilding that would not be used as a dadu. The outbuilding was approved at 16 feet tall. In May 2018, MHCC staff became aware that the applicant constructed a dormer on the right side of the outbuilding in violation of the preservation permit. The dormer does not meet the design guidelines in size and scale. These photos of the outbuilding were taken from the street. Here's a photo taken from the yard and the aerial photo. As the photos show, the dormer is not inset two feet from the exterior wall as the design guidelines require. In addition, the dormer's width is more than 50% of the width of the roof. In fact, it's about 88% of the addition's roof. The staff finds that the dormer's lack of a two-foot inset and its width do not meet the design guidelines. Staff therefore recommends that the dormer be altered so as inset two feet from the wall below and is no wider than 12 feet, which is one-half the width of the roof. With these conditions, staff finds that the resides dormer meets 2B1H of the design guidelines. I won't reread it here, it's all, the official recommendation is right there. The applicants are here, and they have a presentation to show you, but I'm happy to answer any questions between now and then.
Okay, thank you, Melissa. Please state your name and address.
My name is Louis Roberts, and I reside at 543 Brentview Hills Drive. I'm a licensed general contractor. I've been working on historical renovations on, since the 1980s, with Alan DeCooper and Paul Cook. We worked on Richland and Central. Recently, I've done projects designed by Michael Ward on Cantrell and Hampton Avenue, and I work with Jennifer Bagwell, Catherine Sloan, and Sharon Piggott. So I am very familiar with the Historical Commission. I respect the guidelines clearly set forth, and I abide by those guidelines, except in this situation where I really made a terrible mistake, and I wish I hadn't have done it. But during the evolution of the construction, I suggested to the homeowners that we try to develop the area over the garage and have a walk-up staircase. So consequently, then, I recommended the little dormer in order to achieve headroom. I did not look at the guidelines set forth by the Historical Commission. I looked across the backyard and saw the dormer's twin brother on the house, and then I looked through the neighborhood, and I find many examples of the same type of dormer. So I ask that the commission make an exception to this, because I'm going to be a defendant in a very nasty lawsuit about this, because I have given a product, the client has paid for it, they've used it for several years, and now it's going to be taken away. My insurance carrier will not help me with this. So I'm in, as a colleague, as someone who works in the construction industry and respects the bodies that govern this, I ask that you make an exception. I referred to Sharon Piggott, who's an architect. She came out, and I do have a letter, even though I don't think it was submitted in time, but she makes the case, and I will reaffirm, that the outbuilding is subordinate to the main structure, and had we used the allowable square footage of 750 square feet on the outbuilding, then this dormer would fit into the criteria. And as the structure is built, it is quite clearly subordinate to the main structure at 4122 Aberdeen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Brooke Gillum, and I live at 4122 Aberdeen. I'm the homeowner with my husband. So Louis mentioned, we got a permit in 2016. Recently, when we found out the dormer was in violation, we did file another permit for the dormer. I don't want to belabor that, just point out that we felt we had done the correct steps. During construction, Louis mentioned the headroom. At the same time, my husband had begun working from home in a home office in sales and started receiving samples, pallets of t-shirts, helmets, all sorts of promotional gear, so I thought the idea of enhancing the garage for a home office was fantastic and perfect. He really enjoys it as his office. You can see from the front view of the house, the garage is not obstructive. So the top is when we bought the house, there's a sold sign. You can see in the bottom is right now. I have some photos of the garage and the overlay, which you've seen that in your presentation from the commission. I just wanted to point out, you know, exactly what the garage looks like. We really tried very hard to keep it in tone with the house. We bought the house after we looked at it 30 minutes because we loved the curb appeal that it had. We wanted to stay within the look of the historical neighborhood. So here's just another view from the street of the garage. Just to show, as Louis mentioned, we did not build the 700-square-foot structure. We wanted to maintain our yard and the green space. The dormer in question is truly what allows this to be an office. You can see there, the desk and office chairs sit within that space. That room is about 150 square feet. Without the dormer, I think it would be about 65 square feet, which I measured at work today. It's actually the same size as my cubicle, so not ideal for a home office. The green stars on this parcel map indicate the letters within the deck I've passed around. We have eight letters. We do have one from every house adjacent to us. I don't have the blue dots, those were rental properties, and I couldn't locate a homeowner, but the neighbors on either side of the garage have written in agreement that the garage does not cause them any issues, and they have no complaints with it. As I mentioned, the letters are in your deck, and then I just have some pictures. So this is my direct neighbor, you'll see his letter. There is their dormer, so based on that, it just didn't occur to us to get a permit. You know, with construction, you make changes all the time. We should have educated ourselves, and I apologize for that. Now, I've read your website very thoroughly. You clearly indicate what's acceptable from a dormer perspective. I was ignorant, and we should have worked through that initially. We did not. But just to speak that, there are dormers all up and down the street, so it just didn't signal to me that we needed another permit, and we do apologize, but that's why we're here today, asking for approval of this dormer. Just some different images of homes in the neighborhood and their dormers. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Members of the commission, Sean Henry, 315 Dedrick Street, represent Mr. and Mrs. Gilliam, and I'm certainly happy to do so. They're wonderful people. The letters that you have in front of you from their surrounding neighbors speak glowingly of them as neighbors, and what they've done to improve this property. We know, of course, that you're not here deciding personalities and whether or not, you know, a certain personality deserves a certain treatment. But what's important about a few of these letters is, which is very consistent, is that the immediate neighbors find that the addition of the garage is in keeping with the size and architecture of the home as it existed when they built it. And Ms. Donahoe, who's deputy general counsel with the Tennessee Department of Military, asked that as neighbors, we are closest to the structure, we are decidedly the most directly affected by the addition on the Gillum property, we find it aesthetic, an aesthetic complement to everything they have done to beautify the property. That theme is consistent in these letters of support. A couple of things I want to point out, you've heard a little bit about how small this is. We're talking about 150 square feet, we're talking about additional headroom in that structure. That structure's footprint is 460 square feet, could have been 750 square feet, so it's much smaller than it could be. And the inward orientation of that dormer, inward to the rear yard, as opposed to outward toward the neighbors. And so we think this is a modest change, albeit done inconsistent with its original approval, but we also submit that had they asked for this dormer originally two years ago, we think this commission would most likely have supported that and approved it to begin with. There's really three review criteria that you have in front of you. The historic and architectural significance of the structure. This is a brand-new, two-year-old, nonhistoric structure. It's non-contributing to the historic district. Secondly, the impact on the property and the surroundings, and we've got these letters of support, there's absolutely no impact on surrounding properties, and we have full support, including support from Council Lady Kathleen Murphy. She sent an email in with her support. And finally, the set of design guidelines themselves, the issue that we're talking about here regarding what staff is pointing out about moving the outside wall inward two feet, shrinking down the width of that dormer, those are italicized guidance in your document, they are not part of the guidelines themselves. And, you know, the illustrations that you find in the document on pages 19 and 20 are all talking about homes with dormers, adding dormers to existing homes. There's really no depiction of what an appropriate dormer would look like on an accessory structure like this. So we think it was tastefully done, there's no opposition to this. We ask for your support, and we'd like to remain, have the remaining time for any rebuttal. We don't believe there's any opposition here, but if there is, like an opportunity to address that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Henry.
My name is Walter Campbell. I live at 4119 Aberdeen Road, across the street from this structure. I see it every single day, and I think it's beautiful. I think their garage is very nice, so much so that I asked them who their contractor was. I went over and looked at their garage, because I would like to have one just like it. I have absolutely no issue with the garage, I think it looks great. So, there.
Thank you. Anyone else? I just want to make a general comment. Hearing, and we, as much as we appreciate neighborhood recommendations or their opinions, our commission and our board, our purview is with the guidelines, and those guidelines were directed by the neighborhood, who gathered these guidelines. So that's our charge, and so making exceptions is rare, and that we would consider the guidelines as our directive. So just wanted to give that general comment. Thank you. Close public comment, discussion. So, one more thing, and I just wanted to thank the applicant also for your admittance of the, not following the preservation permit, so thank you for that.
So this one, yeah, I don't know. This one's interesting, I mean, overall, I think, you know, we just have, we look at so many that are, you know, these massive projects and massive additions, and, you know, so many things fall under the guidelines that are still very large, and this one, I mean, I used to live on this street, rented, obviously, but it, this is a very nice neighborhood. But it, you know, so it's so modest, you know, does it fit in the guidelines technically? No, that is our charge, but it's just one of those things for me that I am struggling with, because it is very modest, I think it looks nice. You know, it doesn't increase, to me, like the read of it, the massing, I think it's still just very modest, but then, you know, I come back, and the applicant herself has kind of made my other point of it being brought up in every future meeting, because that's what happens with, when exceptions are made. So that's, you know, the one thing, you know, this 204 Mockingbird, you know, I don't know anything about this, but it's just that, you know, now, then, it's, you know, 4122 Aberdeen did this. You know, they don't know it was an exception, the commission might not remember, you know, what happened, so that's my back and forth on this. Yes, I do think it's modest, yes, I think it looks nice. So yeah, I'd like to hear the commissioners' comments on it.
I concur with all of your thoughts here. I mean, we even have another property owner that wants to build one just like it. And so my, my general feeling around being, serving on this commission is that it is not, everything's not so cut and dry, and that you really have to determine the motivation of the people who are constructing these buildings. It didn't seem like that there was a motivation at all to not go by the guidelines or to get final permits on this, and so it's a tough one, because we have struggled with daddos and outbuildings every meeting we have up here. And so I'm very conflicted as well.
I'll go ahead and echo the same concerns. I'm mostly concerned about precedent, and what this would, what this would do for future appeals. Can other commissioners tell me about any other similarities?
Commissioner, would you turn on your microphone, please?
It's on. Yeah. Has anything similar come up recently or in recent years, and how was it handled?
So we get, I mean, we get a lot of precedent presentations from applicants. Some are very detailed, you know, they, so, but, yes, there is a precedent, but then again, you know, so we do get those, but you also just, I think we have to take every case in its own, either for or with or against a precedent that was set, because again, a precedent may have been, you know, every commission meeting, that's why, that's, I think the purpose of a commission is that we're human beings that serve, but, you know, so maybe a precedent was set with a commission prior to all of our times on the commission, so it's different commissions, that's the purpose of, you know, rolling in and, rolling on and off. commissions. That's the purpose of, you know, rolling in and, rolling on and off. And so that's my thought on that. Like, so we do get a lot of precedent presentations and thinking about precedents. And that kind of also guides how staff has to work with applicants. So that's another thing to think about. If we just, you know, make decisions kind of at random, they don't know how to help applicants when they're going through the process. So that's another concern. But each case is its own. You know, I think you can either go with or against a precedent. So that's...
Just to clarify, I mean, I'm mostly concerned about what precedent we would be setting.
Yeah. So with this, it would be, you know, I mean, it would be, oh, well, someone that wants to build a dormer that's larger than is recommended, you know, without the correct insets and everything that is in the guidelines, you know, this would be brought up. But, you know, if we take each case in its own, yes.
And we have to give real clear on why we voted and made it an exception, so that it does help the staff and so that it does help public hearing on why our commission decided to make, you know, yeah, precedence.
If and when we make, if and when we do make exceptions for certain laws.
Understood.
I think I'll add to that. It's very difficult to have more empathy despite the unyielding support for this. And there is no objection to it, to split hairs between one case and the other in response, Andrew, to other cases that have come before us where an applicant would have to turn siding around or do any number of things that would normally be the case if we were reviewing it as it was pitched and as it was drawn, or if there were some variance from the plans and elevation sets. That's what we have to review. So I think, that being said, that's, puts us in a very difficult situation. But I will say, aside from that, if we were reviewing this, not as a violation case, but as an application, I think we would have to, it would behoove us to find a way through the guidelines to find it appropriate and fitting within the guidelines. Not that it necessarily is something that we don't like to do or that might seem absurd to someone who doesn't look at the guidelines every day, to move it this much that way or this much the other way. I think an argument, a convincing argument would need to be made by somebody on the commission to do that. And I think that gives us quarter to do something different in one situation versus the other.
One other add to that, David, is that there's been comment of applicants to say, well, it's the italicized directive. And, you know, that, those italicized has become part of the guidelines because, you know, other projects that we have reviewed have been based on those and consistently made decisions on those items. So even if it is italicized, it has become part of the design guidelines. Yeah. Just wanted to clarify. Thank you. Commissioners, any other discussion?
No.
Okay, are we ready to, make a, okay?
Sure, if I may. I had, I had a minute.
I just wanted to make sure everybody was good. Okay.
I just, I had, I had a minute left there. And I just wanted to comment that, you know, the real question before this board is whether or not it's compatible. Is it compatible with the surrounding structures? We're not submitting examples of other dormers for the purposes, for the purpose of saying, hey, there's a precedent in the neighborhood and therefore you need to approve this. The question is, is it compatible without contrasting greatly with surrounding properties? And so my client found other properties with dormers that seem relevant to that question of compatibility. So we submit that this is compatible in the context of the neighborhood in which it's found and the input of others who've looked at this also find it compatible. And so we offer up neighbor, that neighbor input for you to consider as other people who live there, who have invested there, as believing in their minds that this is a compatible addition to that, to that structure. Thank you.
Thank you. Still need to discuss, or do we make a motion?
You know, these are difficult, we've spent a lot of time on outbuildings over the years and a lot of difficult discussions that are hard for us and for the owners and everybody involved. This one is one where, you know, I travel up and down the street quite a bit. And I do remember looking and seeing what a beautiful renovation of the house and restoration, how beautifully done. And I do have to say, when I looked at the garage with the, with sort of the flag flying up there, I was gonna, I was sort of saying, you know, how did that happen? And because it is totally in opposition to all of our guidelines for those types of structures. So I do find that the wall projecting to the front wall of the garage is objectionable to me. I do see that, yes, in the neighborhood, especially for those buildings built before the guidelines, there are a lot of shed dormers that maximize the square footage. It's the same square footage as the lower part of the house. They're not particularly attractive or appropriate for the historical nature, but they were built in, in the history of this neighborhood. So and given that this is a form that is, that is in the neighborhood, you know, I would be willing to look at a minimal, not quite as stringent as what the staff has said, because certainly what they've said would bring it into compliance. And there wouldn't be any question about that. But I would, I would entertain a long conversation here with our commissioners, moving in that street-facing wall a minimum of two feet and seeing if that might be something that would be more acceptable. And as mentioned, the rest of the dormer is not visible from the street or from, from the others' areas. So that's one thing I would throw out as, as one way of finding a compromise on this one.
Do, do we need to second that? Is that a movement, a non-motion?
So, you're, I'm just seeing what you, the front wall, you mean the, the front wall of the dormer, just moving?
The parallel of the street.
Mm-hmm.
From the streets.
Okay. I'm looking at that.
It's in the same plane as the top wall of the garage.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Well, that would effectively, you wouldn't be able to see it from the, the street then.
It would, it would, it would have, it'd be in the same plane than an acceptable dormer would.
I gotcha.
But it would, it would extend further down the slope of the roof than an acceptable dormer would. So it doesn't correct, it corrects one plane but not the other.
Which is invisible.
Right.
I understand.
Can I, can I make a comment on this?
No, not yet, not yet.
Okay. I wanted to define what's visible and what's not visible on this.
No, we, public, public comment is closed, so we're in discussion and we need to vote. So...
Okay. I just wanted to correct some of the statements up there.
I'm going to close. Thank you.
Unless you all want to approve him later, after we talk.
Okay. Did I still understand what Cyril's proposal will look like from the street? Is it the top right-hand, the picture's up on, on there right now, Cyril? Is it the top right-hand roof slope right here?
That's correct.
And so how's it gonna look with your proposed?
So from that, from that perspective, it won't look all different except that wall, the dorm will be pushed back two feet.
Back this way?
Back toward the back of the lot.
But I do have a question on, oops, yeah, it would be that way. But this wall looks like the one that's not set, the two-foot, this, this wall here.
It's both of them.
It's both of them. And, and I think you, what you're saying is that because that's not as visual to the street, that, that would be a compromise.
It doesn't look as massive. It doesn't look as massive as it does right now.
It's just not on the same plane from the front.
I'm just gonna say, it, to me, and can I read that front facade again one more time? Thank you. That the two-foot would be from that wall instead of that wall. Because you wouldn't really see the two-foot from the front side, but on the, on the side, you could see the, a two-foot inset. And then what would be part compromise on the two-foot inset? David and Ben, any comments on that?
Is it correct that the staff recommendation is to, is to reduce the size in both end-to-end and on the front?
That's correct.
Two feet, three, in three different directions?
That's correct, yeah.
The total is 12 feet wide though, right? Reduce it to 12 feet wide.
Right. How wide is it currently?
21.
The dormer's 21 feet wide and the roof's 24 feet wide. So, I mean, honestly, that, I mean, that, the right there just kind of brings it full circle for me. I mean, it's hard to have, I mean, it's hard to have this, you know, opinion because it's already been built, but it just very clearly doesn't fit in the guidelines. And they're pretty black and white. So, no, no, this is just a hard one for me. Just that it's, it's still modest, but it is for the size of the building, you know, just that it's so much wider than the guidelines call for. So, in that case, I do just agree with staff on that.
I don't have anything constructive to add.
Caitlin, would you like to make a motion?
Regarding 4122 Aberdeen Road, I move to adopt staff recommendation for this project in the disapproval of this existing dormer and with the recommendations that staff has given to pull it into nonviolation, into the guidelines.
There is a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second? All those in favor?
None.
Any opposed? Okay, we have one, one opposition. Robin, we have one opposition?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you, commissioners.
All right. This is the next item on the agenda, 1205 Fourth Avenue North. So this is a request for signage that was installed without a preservation permit. The building is located at 1205 Fourth Avenue North. It's a brick bungalow that contributes to the character of the Germantown neighborhood. The historic house includes a non-contributing rear addition, which you can see on the bottom photo, that addresses Madison Street. Signage on the addition was permitted prior to the 2017 amendments to the Germantown Design Guidelines. So the maximum allotment for signage is based on building type. The building type for this site is considered a house building type, given its residential form, which is the bungalow, which is a common residential form. In addition, the building height, roof form, and front setback are all common for a house building type. And it's not uncommon for a house building type to be used as a non-residential, for non-residential purposes. So under the design guidelines, the maximum allotment for a house building type is six square feet. Since this building appears to be two separate buildings with two different forms that house two different businesses, staff would recommend that the building be considered two separate buildings for signage purposes. So four signs were installed on the site without a permit. These include a monument sign, which you can see in the top left. It's 24 square feet. A shingle sign, which you can see in the top right photo, it's four square feet. A wall sign, the bottom left photo, it's one and a half square feet. And a pole sign, which is two square feet. So staff would recommend that the pole sign, which is really a parking sign, should not be included in the overall allotment, given that it's a small directional sign that has minimal impact. So not including the parking sign, the total signage installed on the site is 29 and a half square feet, which exceeds the allotment by over 23 square feet. So staff would recommend keeping the shingle sign and wall signs and removing the monument sign, which would bring the total signage to five and a half square feet, which would not exceed the maximum allotment. The materials for both the, the shingle and the wall signs meet the design guidelines and neither of those signs are illuminated. So not only would removing the monument sign reduce the overall signage to be within the allotment, but also, at this point, it's not known whether or not a monument sign meets the design guidelines for location. A scaled site plan showing the sign in relation to the building and the property line was not submitted with the application. So under the design guidelines, monument signs are permitted only when a building sits at least 15 feet back from the right-of-way. And if the, the building meets that, that criteria, then the monument sign would need to be set back five feet from the front property line. So furthermore, the, as you can see, the, the sign incorporates changeable copy, which the commission has previously only approved in civic building types. And furthermore, the design guidelines, specifically 6.6A, specifically list marquee type signs for announcements of activities taking place at the location as, as signage that's not permitted. So the location of the wall sign is appropriate. However, staff would, would recommend relocating the shingle sign from the porch post, as shown here, to one of the side porch racks where it could hang without obscuring the porch post or any other architectural feature. So in conclusion, staff recommends approval with the conditions that the monument sign is removed and that the shingle sign is moved to hang from the porch rack. So with these conditions, staff finds the project could meet Section 6A and B of the Germantown Historic Preservation Zoning District Handbook and Design Guidelines.
Thank you, Melissa. Is the applicant here? Okay, okay. The applicant is not here. We'll open public hearing. Anyone would like to speak on this project? All right, closed public hearing. Commissioners?
Melissa, did you say at the beginning, there was a previously, there was a, because I'm seeing on page six of the staff report, there was a sign there. But I'm guessing that was before the guidelines. So this is a new sign, so therefore it's a permit.
Exactly.
Okay. Just to be clear.
And since that time, you adopted amendments to the design guidelines, which changed how signage was viewed. So...
Okay. Yeah, just, I was looking at that and saw that.
Was the sign in fact in place before the guidelines were?
No.
I didn't think so.
No. But I think the guidelines were changed in 2017. This is more recent.
I think the sign that was predating this one was in violation, to be clear.
Well, actually, it was permitted. It met the design guidelines at the time, which didn't really have specific standards for signs. So...
Okay. Commissioners, anybody want to make a motion?
Given that there's, yeah, applicant's not here to say otherwise or make a case, I'll move approval with the staff's recommendation of the application at 1205 Fourth Avenue North.
I'll second. Okay, there's a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. None opposed? None opposed?
All right. Onto the first action item today. This is at 1704 Fourth Avenue North, and it is an application to construct a new, a new two-story building. A non-contributing building on the lot has been approved for demolition. And I went by yesterday, and it actually has been demolished. So, it's now a vacant lot. And the historic context, as you can see, adjacent to the left there, consists of one-story houses. Many of those, certainly in this image, but around the area, are Victorian gable L-form houses. There are bungalows as well. The design guidelines do allow for two stories for new construction in the Salem Town overlay with a height limit of 35 feet. The new building that's proposed will match the front setbacks of the block face. And the width of the building will be 31 and a half feet. This is a 37 and a half-foot wide lot. So, that gives building, gives the building side setbacks of three feet. And that does not meet the standard setback requirement from bulk zoning. Bulk zoning requires a five-foot side setback. The commission does have authority to approve construction that doesn't meet the standard setbacks if and when doing so is more compatible or would be more compatible with the historic context. And there are houses in the area nearby, the two, that house adjacent to the left, and then one more to the left of that, that are similar width. But those, again, are one-story houses, whereas what is proposed is two-story. The depth of the building, front to back, is, the new building is also about 20 feet deeper than the adjacent historic houses. So, although two stories can be appropriate or does meet the guidelines, staff finds that the massing of a proposed two-story house that maximizes or exceeds the allowable width is too great. Onto the elevations, the building shown is 31 feet 6 inches tall. And that is an appropriate height. They do show one foot of foundation. We typically require new construction to have a floor height or foundation height that's compatible with adjacent houses. So, that really should be increased to match the adjacent house, which is approximately 2'9". That would increase the building height to 33 feet, which is still appropriate or still meets the guideline, under the maximum of 35. Onto the side elevations, the materials are a split-face block foundation, cement fiber siding, asphalt, shingle roof, fairly typical for new construction. The window pattern is very regular and consistent with historic houses. The rear elevation, nothing necessarily worth pointing out there. It's compatible, meets the guidelines. Again, the main issue would be the width of the building. There is a two-story outbuilding that's proposed for the, associated with the building. Two-story outbuildings are appropriate or may be appropriate with two-story houses with a maximum height of 25 feet tall. The drawings show the height of the building to be 25 feet tall, but it starts about a foot above where the actual floor is. So, staff would ask that the height of the building is reduced so that the actual height floor to peak is 25 feet. Otherwise, that outbuilding meets the guidelines. That's, again, the previous house that's been demolished there on the left edge of the photo. And a vacant lot, which is a parking lot for a church, is immediately to the right. Some of the adjacent, or not adjacent, but nearby, nonhistoric context, some of those houses, you know, to give you an idea of some of the scale of two-story infill that we've approved. But none of those have required a setback reduction. They were either on wider lots or they were just different-sized buildings. Staff recommends approval of the proposed infill, two-story infill at 1709 Fourth Avenue North with conditions that the floor height of the principal building is consistent with the floor heights of adjacent houses, which staff would verify in the field. That the front setback is consistent with setbacks of adjacent houses, again, to be verified. That the width of the principal building is reduced to 27 feet 6 inches, which would meet the standard setbacks for the lot. That the height of the outbuilding shall be reduced to 25 feet. That the outbuilding not exceed 750 square feet in area. That the window and door selections are approved by staff. The roof color is approved by staff. And the walkway and driveway materials and HVAC connections are also approved by staff. Meeting all those conditions, staff finds that this project meets guidelines for new construction in Salem Town Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay.
Sean, do you have any pictures of the historic surrounding?
This is, well, that's the house or the lot with the retaining wall, and there's a chain link fence around it. The blue house to the left is a turn of the century, plus or minus, 1910 maybe. Folk Victorian, as is the one to the left and the one to the left of that. From the overhead, you can see the parking lot. And then the lot that we're talking about is the front gabled house. It's just to the left of the parking lot. And then those three historic houses there in a row. And a non-contributing triplex that's at the corner of Fourth. And I'm not sure what that cross street is. Buchanan, perhaps? Garfield.
Okay. Thank you, Sean. Is the applicant here? Okay. We are open for public hearing. Anyone in comments? Okay. Close public hearing. Commission discussion.
I find the staff recommendations to be right on in looking at the plans and would move for approval based on the staff recommendations.
There's a motion?
Second.
There's a second? All in favor? No opposition?
Okay. Here we are at 1,000 Gilmore Avenue. And this is an application to construct a rear addition to this historic folk Victorian, maybe even edging into Queen Anne-style house. They have already been issued a permit for some general repairs and reconstruction of the front porch. So, in case you've driven by and seen work going on, it's certainly been approved. There's an image of the house. It's a corner lot, and this is 10th Avenue South. Looking at the right side of the property. And then this is the rear of the building. The proposal includes the removal of this rear portion of the building. It may be a very early addition. It may be an original porch that's been altered. But as you can see from the side and rear elevations, it's minimal. It stepped in from the sides of the house. The roof sits below the main roof line. And even though it's a corner lot, making it visible, staff finds that this is not really a, it's not part of the primary mass of the house. Staff finds it not to be a significant contributing feature. So, as parcel demolition, that is appropriate. And the new addition will tie into the rear wall where that building is, where the portion being removed is. That's the footprint of the existing building with the portion that's being removed. And then showing the footprint of the proposed new addition. As I said, it ties into the rear. It will be stepped in a foot from the left side and more than a foot on, sorry. The right is the, right side of that house is to the bottom. So, it stepped in one foot on the right and more than a foot on the left. And then it goes back towards the rear of the lot and widens back out to 37 feet wide at the very rear of the addition. The right facade, the right facade bottom of that image is along 10th Avenue South is articulated with the walls stepping in, out, back in, and then back out a few feet proud or this side of the primary wall of the house. Down at the bottom there of that image, the site plan shows an uncovered patio. But that patio is not at grade level. It's elevated a few fleet, a few feet. So, it's really more of a porch. And as a porch, it encroaches into the side setback requirement of bulk zoning because the addition is already wider than the house and it encroaches into a street setback, not necessarily something that's more historically appropriate. Staff finds that the addition should not be wider than the historic house and recommends against reducing that side setback. Street-side setbacks are 10 feet. This would encroach four, six feet into the setback, leaving a four-foot buffer, excuse me, to the edge of the sidewalk. There's the line showing, I guess, lining up with the primary wall of the house. Obviously, the open porch. And there's a semi-hexagonal bay that are, you know, articulated from that primary wall, which I can show you again there. But we look at the main wall of the house as being, as being what you see there. Certainly, what's perceived as the main wall. Obviously, the bay that projects doesn't even have a foundation. So, front and rear elevations, side elevations, the left elevation, which is top there. In the center of it, you see the section that is sort of inside that courtyard between the primary mass of the house and the mass of the addition. The bottom image there is the right side, which faces second, sorry, 10th Avenue South. The character of the addition in the roof form, the pattern of windows, the materials, certainly compatible with the historic house. However, staff finds that the massing of the addition is not appropriate because the relative depth of the addition, or the depth of the addition, again, front to back, relative to that of the historic house, is very great. It's too substantial, considering that this long elevation, the east elevation, faces a busy street or any street it faces, it will be essentially highly visible. Just to kind of touch on the concept of depth of additions. The commission has given staff the authority to administratively approve additions that don't exceed or don't increase the depth of a house by more than 50%. Of course, if other guidelines like height and materials are met. But there isn't a specific, it doesn't clearly say or isn't very specific about what should be the maximum depth of additions. And that's because, other than to say that new construction additions should be compatible with historic buildings, it's sort of left out there because there are over 10,117 properties in historic overlays. We counted yesterday, or Melissa counted yesterday. And each is unique. So, there's some judgment that's required on your part, essentially, to determine what's appropriate for that aspect of massing in this situation. You know, height and width are clearly specified, and it talks about massing. But certainly, the third dimension of the third dimensional aspect is the depth. So, on this house, we're talking about a primary mass, as we see it, of the historic house, front to back, as 52 feet. And the addition or the component that's being demolished would add or does add another seven feet to that. And then the, sorry, the portion that's being removed. And then the proposed addition being 62 feet of depth in total, from the back of the primary mass of the house to the very rear. And that's the, just the footprint. That certainly doesn't, you know, factor in that it actually ties into the back of the house. It's just, or the back slope of the roof, which might actually be drawn with a steeper pitch than the house actually have, has, now that I see it in sort of all put up there together. So, with the total depth, with the addition completed, this house would be 114 feet front to back. That far exceeds any historic structure in the area. Staff finds that the scale, as it would be perceived from a highly visible facade on 10th Avenue South, is not compatible with the historic house and is not compatible with the historic context. The addition's width and depth are not appropriate because the house fails to utilize space behind the building where an addition could be done with a smaller and less visible impact. Staff recommends approval of the proposed addition to the historic house at 1,000 Gilmore Avenue with the following conditions: that the depth of the addition shall be reduced to be subordinate to that of the historic house; that the walls of the addition shall be not, shall not be wider than the primary massing of the historic house; that the addition shall not setback into the setback buffer; that the material of the side and rear porch floors and walkway and paving materials are approved administratively, as well as window and door selections; that there be a four-inch mullion between paired windows; and that HVAC and other utilities be located on the rear or on the side of a non-street-facing facade beyond the midpoint of the building. In meeting those conditions, staff finds that the proposal would meet the guidelines for additions in the Waverly Belmont Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay. And I heard the applicant behind me. I'm sure she'll want to talk to you.
Thank you, Sean.
Melissa, you have any questions for me?
I have a question for you, Tim. It looks to me that on the side porch or elevation, the east elevation there, it just, it shows stairs going up to an elevated, probably concrete slab, which would be appropriate, but no handrails. It appears that's at the height that would require handrails. But your recommendation is to eliminate that side porch. Is that correct?
Yes. I asked the zoning examiners at Coads for essentially a ruling, an opinion on whether or not that meets setbacks. They said it does not because it's a, the setback being 10 feet, as that would be an encroachment, which they would advise against. And they did mention something about the height requiring a railing. I think the applicant is willing to eliminate or reduce the height of it, among other things. But they kind of, you know, I didn't want to piecemeal, offer a couple of, you know, put a railing here and this will be okay when the, sort of in light of the recommendation overall.
Caitlin Smouse. My address is 912 Bailey Street. I'm with 912 Architects. I'm the architect for this project. First of all, that side porch has been removed. We indicated to Sean that we were just going to take that off of the project. So, it didn't get reflected in the drawings, but that's off the table. So, we are not asking for a side setback reduction. We will go down to a patio at grade level if we need to. So, those packets being passed around, there's photos in the front that are from the owner, who cannot be here today because of a work obligation. And then there's some precedents in the back that I'll refer to later. So, I would like to take the opportunity to read a letter from the owner because she couldn't be here. "We are Jeanette and Clay Whitson, a mother and son team who are renovating 1,000 Gilmore Avenue. We recently completed a full renovation in 1102 Corruthers Avenue of a historic 1899 house that very closely resembles the house on Gilmore." And that's the first picture you see. So, the one photo is a house that was just recently redone. The other one is 1,000 Gilmore. They're very, very similar in form. "My son worked on the renovation during his college breaks, taking down 100-year-old coal chimneys, preserving the materials and reusing them on-site, much like he is doing on the Gilmore House. He has finished college and intends to continue renovating direct derelict houses in the neighborhood using authentic materials, such as replacing vinyl windows with custom-built wood windows and wood siding as they were originally. He has recently obtained his real estate license, and he is not here today because he's actually in training. At 1,000 Gilmore, we are establishing an HPR under state statute and creating a duplex under the established R8 multifamily-based zoning. The house is in a derelict state, as you can kind of see from those exterior pictures. They've had to rebuild the front porch, which is falling in, rebuild the support and framing under the house, reroute a spring and install a sub-pump, and will have to repair extensive termite damage all along the back foundation. Being able to create two separate assets is important so that my son can live in the back very modest 1,100-square-foot footprint home while being able to sell the front historic house." house. Therefore, the suggestion that we have received to just create a dadu does not really fit the needs of the development of this property. We originally met with staff to discuss the design guidelines. Originally thought the circumstances would allow a detached duplex under the following provision: detached infill duplexes may be appropriate in the following instances. There's not enough square footage to legally subdivide the lot, but there is enough frontage and width to the lot to accommodate two single-family dwellings in a manner that meets the design guidelines. Our position is that because the historic house is shifted on the lot, and there's plenty of depth to build a secondary subordinate home within the established setbacks, like many of the historic homes facing 10th Avenue, that this should be allowed. We took the advice of staff to attach the duplexes with everything oriented towards Gilmore. We've been very conscientious about creating a gradual stepping in and out of the addition, utilizing hips and side gables to achieve an addition that is distinguishable and subordinate to the historic house in length, height, and square footage. The original house is 59 foot 2 inches long. The addition is only 55 feet 3 inches long and therefore subordinate. The roof sits 2 foot 2 inches below the historic home and is therefore subordinate. The addition's footprint is not more than the historic home and is in fact well under it. The historic home has a 1,943-square-foot footprint. Total addition is 1,530 square feet. The upper-story rear addition is very modest, stepping out only a few feet from the back of the house. It actually sits where a rear porch sits now. The rear porch that has been demolished is actually rid of the house as seen on the Sandburn map and has the same foundation. It is not a later addition, although it was modified at some point to enclose a rear section to add a bath to the house. The proposed addition would actually restore the sightline from the front door of the house all the way through the back door to the green space of the terrace, which was the original view corridor. That view into green space is very important to me. On this lot, there are only two trees. There is a beautiful 60-foot tree that sits close to the property line 26 feet from the back of the house, extends way over the roof of the house and is the backbone of the terrace design. That's a second photo, you can see there's a side curb cut and the back of the house and the trees up there. It is important to me to have a living space for the front house, restore the view through the house, and preserve this tree. The tree extending way over the roof of the house negates the appearance that there is a lack of green space. So the recommendation states that there is the appearance of there being much less open space remaining on the lot than is typically found in the district. The lot is 8,552 square feet, and the entire structure as proposed is only 3,473 square feet, which means that more than 60% of the lot is green space and is preserved. Being evaluated on appearance rather than the reality of actual green space feels very arbitrary. I have attached a landscape plan, which is in the last page. From the Gilmore side, if the commission wants to evaluate what the appearance will actually look like once an eight-foot fence is erected and trees plant along the side to buffer the property from the ongoing bus traffic down 10th Avenue. Also included photos of two neighbors on 10th Avenue to include the appearance of their homes from 10th Avenue directly to the south. Directly to the north, there is a historic duplex with a third historic home built directly behind it, as shown in the 1957 Sandburn map. Next door to it is the Waverly Belmont School, and across the street is a large church. That comprises the rhythm along 10th Avenue. In conclusion, I hope that you will consider our plans, which we took a lot of time to develop with the intention of fixing a longstanding eyesore in the community and creating an allowable duplex which blends into the historic neighborhood. So that is from Jeanette Whitson, who is the owner. And I'm going to kind of give my own comments. 1,000 Gilmore is zoned R8 and allows for two units. So as Jeanette said, our original thought was to build a second unit towards the back facing 10th. There's a very similar situation behind our lot at 1,001 Carruthers. A detached home was built sometime before 1957 and sits behind the main house. 10th Avenue is a busy mixed-use street with a bus line that runs frequently. It seemed appropriate to design a subordinate unit that faces 10th. However, we were told by staff that a detached duplex would not be permitted by the commission, so we pursued an attached duplex plan. The fact that we are now being told that we are too deep and that there needs to be more green space facing 10th seems kind of conflicting to us. We first sat down with Robin and Melissa Baldock and shared a preliminary site plan to talk about what we wanted to do. We were not given any negative feedback on the depth or width of the addition, even though from the very beginning we showed it going to the rear setback and extending past the side of the house. We were surprised by Sean's recommendations, and so would like to address the two about the depth and the width. So as Jeanette's letter stated, it's very important to the owner to preserve yard space and create a sense of privacy for each unit. So we designed a terrace that is buffered from the busy 10th Avenue and preserves a very large old-growth tree. We kept the addition of the original house modest in size, only eight feet deep, which is one foot deeper than that rear porch that's on there now. And the duplex on the rear with a modest footprint, it's only 1,100-square-foot footprint. The original house is 59 foot 2 inches deep, and the addition extends 55 feet 3 inches beyond that. The only feedback I personally ever received from staff and commission is that the addition must not double the footprint or depth of the original house. The depth of our addition is four feet less than the house. The first site plan on there is 1810 Fifth Avenue North. It was approved in April 2017. It's a similar situation in that a duplex is achieved with a rear addition. The historic house is 55 feet deep, and the addition is 54 feet deep. This was approved, and no mention was even made that the depth of the addition was not subordinate. That was a one-foot difference, and we have a four-foot difference here. Also, my firm works on quite a few historic additions where we add on a great deal to the existing house and then design a dadu at the rear of the lot. Even with the space between the dadu and the house, those projects are much denser and provide more lot coverage and less usable green space than what we're asking for here. We would also like to address the recommendation about the width of the addition. As drawn, parts of the addition align with the side of the original porch and extend only 10 inches past the bay on the side of the house. This lot is unique in that the side property lines are both angled in. I don't know if you can pull up the site plan? Thanks. So you can see the property line, it's about almost 60 feet in the front and angles back to 50 feet in the back. So not only are they angled in on both sides, but the house actually sits past the setback on the west side. So, you know, with that angle, we have decreased buildable area in the back of the lot. The porch on 1,000 Gilmore is original to the house and is a major piece of the overall massing from the front. The one-story piece that extends on the addition is a full 57 feet back, so the part where it comes out and aligns with the porch is 57 feet back from the front of the house. At that distance, I mean, if you're standing on Gilmore, you're not even going to be able to perceive that it goes wider than the bulk wall of the house that aligns with the porch. I pulled this quote from the guidelines: "Rear additions that are wider than an existing historic building may be appropriate when the building is narrower than 30 feet or shifted to one side of the lot." 1,000 Gilmore is definitely shifted to one side of the lot and has to do with an angled property line as well, thus guidelines should apply. Also, I pulled up some precedents. Went back and looked at projects approved since January 2017 and found a few that support an addition aligning with a porch. So the next site plan is 1514 Cedar Lane. It was approved just last month, and the recommendation states that "the addition extends wider than the side wall of the house on the left side. Staff finds a wider part of the addition to be appropriate for several reasons. The wider portion lines up with the existing covered porch located near the front of the house on the left-side facade. In addition, the wider portion is single-story and has a side-gabled roof form that helps to minimize the impact of a wider addition." Those comments could directly apply to what we're doing here. 210 Leonard Avenue was approved in February and is wider than the existing house and goes right to the side setback as well as the rear setback. It is also taller than the existing house. 2701 Woodlawn Drive was approved in November of 2017 and has a large addition that extends to the side behind an existing porch. The recommendation reads, "This part of the addition will still be behind the historic house's side porch. The addition will be no wider than the historic house." So that just seems to prove to me that the porch is included in the mass of the house.
Your time limit.
Okay, well, I was done. If you have any questions, let me know.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Open public hearing. Anyone would like to speak on this project? Close public hearing? Discussion?
I have a couple of questions for staff and perhaps the applicant. So I'm looking at the overhead. The church fronts, is 10th the side street? Church fronts 10th, there's a, is that a minimal traditional that also fronts 10th? Or is that an outbuilding to the house on the next block?
That backs up the lot, that backs up to this? It is, yes, it's a non, I believe it's non-contributing. It's like 19, I think I looked it up, 57, something like that. It's more recent, but it's as much as, you know, one might like to think you can just divide any lot. Nowadays, there are minimum lot sizes, and, you know, that is on what would now be considered a substandard lot. So it's a situation that existed sometimes historically and through history and more recent history as well, but certainly dividing that off as a second lot just doesn't meet.
And what's across the street, but it is, I mean, it's a unit in and of itself, it's not a building.
Correct, yes.
And what's across the street, looks like it fronts the same street that...
Yeah, that fronts Gilmore as well. It looks like it's had some recent additions, perhaps.
Yeah, there's a big something on the side of it there. The, yeah, that's really, just some clarification. Is this property, is the entire neighborhood R8, or is it just this property that is R8?
Yeah, certainly the majority of it. This is maybe south of the area that's the historic core, the National Register District are on the south end of the National Register area, and I think most of that is R8.
So I'm looking, I'm going to ask the, maybe staff or architects on the board here. I'm looking at the final page in the staff report. It's the east elevation. Does that, you know, I see on the other elevations or the aerial view, the layout said that's like there's a terrace. Does that roof just in, is that, am I looking at the roof ending at the top? You see what I'm saying? Or is there a further, or is that line, so the east elevation two?
Yeah, you're saying in the midpoint, and that's just a vertical.
It's just a vertical.
Gable and universal.
It's a gable, got it, okay. And then it's so, and then on the other side of the roof line that we're looking at, it's a terrace, it's a flat, correct? Okay.
Sean, does, did your report say anything, you know, you had mentioned it was 114 length completed total, which is the largest of the historic context, I mean, larger than the historic context. Did you say anything about what the other historic context is in the neighborhood?
I believe I said what the one across the street is in the recommendation. And I'll see if I can find that.
I meant like, most of them are 80 foot to 100, or, I'm throwing that out, I don't know.
The similar, one block away, so it's a block south, but meaning it is also a house that is facing south. 1,000 Montrose Avenue, for example, has a similar Victorian form and is on a larger lot, but is only 60 feet deep.
And may, when you were presenting your sizes, the applicant made a comment, and I wasn't writing down initially what the different, but what are the discrepancies between you and the applicant for the depth? If you, do you know those, or...
Yeah, whether or not that rear component that's being removed would be considered in the depth of the building, the existing building, and then, you know, how that relates to, does, so we can approve administratively once it only increased the depth by half, but it's not really in any italicized or otherwise what the guideline, that an addition can't extend more than twice the depth of the house, or it can't more than double of the house. But we've kind of looked to that as kind of, you know, for an addition to be subordinate and compatible, if it exceeds the dimensions of a historic house, then kind of by logic, it's hard to make a case that it's compatible. So we've discussed that, but it, I mean, it is like you're talking about with the other case, it's case by case. So, you know, you could have a little tiny historic house that's only, you know, 20 feet or 25 feet deep and on a very large lot, and, you know, it might be, it might make sense there to add more than 25 feet because it's a small house in a big lot. Whereas if you had a big four-square that, you know, is the same size of addition relative that a historic house, there's just not an easy answer, other than just visibility. I mean, it's perception of scale, you know, when the applicant said that it's not fair to look at it based on appearance when the reality of the lot coverage is X, Y, Z. But all the guidelines really address are what something looks like. You know, does it look too big? Does it look taller? Or is, you know, is and looks like are pretty much one and the same when it comes to something you see from a street. That probably didn't answer the question very well.
This one hurts my sensibilities, and I want to back up to form and placement on the lot. I think there, in my mind, the problem was created in that you've got two units that want to go on one lot. And to create an umbilical cord duplex sort of forces it into this stringing it from one lot to the next. And I know I'm not making any friends with the staff, nor with the director, but if there were a time that it could be appropriate, that there would be a detached building that were not, may or may, we're getting into may or may not, that, you know, the dadu, well, the next-door neighbor wants to come in, and now they want it to be as big as this one that's on the, you know, it's on the corner lot. Well, they're not on a corner lot, and I think in this instance, for me, I separate these two things and I don't have the connection, and a lot of this just sort of evaporates. I say that, and my questions earlier were related to, there are multiple structures, one being a pretty large church that fronts 10th Avenue. So it's not as if you're taking and creating this new dialogue with a street that's not a primary street. So getting bogged down in some of the, out this way or in that way, for me, just sort of, I don't think you can make this into something that doesn't look like it fills the whole lot, because it does, because it's connected. And so just on the face of it, that's something that, I don't think I could doctor this enough to make it, other than just go, you know, cut the middle out to make it something that looks, just meets the eye test, and I think also meets the guidelines. So that's my two cents. I'll back away from the discussion at this point.
So Ben, are you, are you opposed to the depth of the building, just being because of the fact that they're trying to put them both together, or that, you know, that that's what this calls for? Or is it something that you're saying in this...
I'm backing up to the initial decision, you know.
Yeah.
By right, you can put a duplex on the lot. Is it better to take the duplex and cram it together on this lot because it's a corner lot? It's all visible. And so to separate them, and I think if I cut the, you know, the slice of cake out of the middle and I just look at the building as it would stand on its own, it's certainly subordinate to the main house. There's a lot of other things going on. Where's the primary entrance? I don't want to, it doesn't strike me as going halfway with this one. To make it look like it addresses Glenmore, I think it would want to address 10th, but that's completely 180 degrees opposed to staff's opinion about this and maybe others. That's just what, I can't get to a place where we can solve the problems of this particular lot because, because of the umbilical cord, it just goes from one end of the lot to the other. There's just no getting around that. No amount of in and out or up and down is going to change that, unless you cut the middle out.
You know, I have a lot of sentiment for what Ben says. I do think if you look at the structure of the unit in the back, it is subordinate to the main structure. When you look at the connector, you've got 24 feet of laundry room that connects the front and the back. And yes, you could shrink that up some. The biggest effect I think that would have, you know, maybe it's three, four... that would have, you know, maybe it's three, four feet, you know, whatever, whatever number you come up with is a magic number. And I, I don't know that that's going to perceptually change what you see from the street. It will perceptually change the courtyard and the usability, the outdoor space in between when you move it up that much. So, so I think you're right. It's, it's a difficult thing. I do think they've done a pretty good job with the elevation there of trying to get everything compatible with the existing structure. And I'm glad to see that the porch is off the side. I think that was difficult. And so, so that's sort of my comments.
Yeah, I, I agree with you on that, Carol. I mean, I think had the roofline, so my first question, had the roofline extended that whole way, it would be just massive looking, you know. But the fact that it kind of on the east elevation and west, you know, it just reads a lot shorter and subordinate. I do like that. I mean, I think that's a nice feature. You know, I guess the only thing, for me, the depth, I think, you know, with, with the part of the addition being demolished, then what's the original structure? I think there was something already there. So adding on, and then with the smaller massing, you know, I, I think the depth fits on that corner. And then I guess the, the question of the setbacks, you know, because they're so close. And so I don't know how we deal with that. I mean, I don't know if a setback determination needs to be made just, just for more space, but.
Well, I think that with the, with the elimination of the porch, are we within the setbacks?
Perhaps. I guess we'd have to see what is done there in its place. I mean, if there's, there are doors on that side, so if there's got to be a stair, then I'll have to check with the zoning to see if, and they make a distinction between decks, porches, and stoops, and none of them ever, you know, when does one become the other? So I'll, I'll have to check with them.
Yeah. I think if you eliminate a structure on that part, then you've eliminated the setback problem from that standpoint. It's still wider than the main residence, but, but you've eliminated the setback problem.
So it, it seems to me then that the, the main issue with, is with the depth of the addition in terms of scale. So I would, I would think that given the size of the, the courtyard and the connector, that could be made subordinate by, by decreasing the size of the connector.
Or eliminating it.
Or eliminating it. I like, you know, the courtyard is nice, but it seems pretty big and usable. It could still be usable to, if it were a little smaller. And that would bring it reasonably within guidelines definition of subordinate. Because I, I agree. I think the elevations are good, but it reads really long to me.
So how many feet do you think?
As many as Sean will, make it past Sean's muster.
But I think that's the kind of thing that we can give a recommendation on that we'll advise him, so.
Let me look at the numbers.
I just, I can't not, you know, you've got house, space, house, space with alley, house. I'm, I'm opposed to, to an umbilical cord duplex on, just in general. I think they're, they're just bad. It's, the form is, it's, it's not a pattern of development. And I can't be silent on that. I, I think this project is worse for the two buildings being connected. I don't, I don't think any, any amount of manipulation will correct that. But I'm, I'm one of many.
Did the applicant say, was, did I, do I remember something about the original idea being two structures or no?
I can help with that.
Yes.
What happens is, and I appreciate Commissioner Mosley saying that he didn't want to go against staff or the, or the director, but it's not us. It's the existing ordinance. So they would like to sell the two different units separately. It's our understanding. And in order to do that, it does have to be attached. A dadu cannot be sold separately. The owner must live in one of the two units. That's the existing ordinance. Has nothing to do with the historical relay. That's countywide ordinance. You know, I don't think anyone thinks that particularly works very well, but it is what we have today. And so it's our only option right now until that is fixed. We did get funding to look at some alternatives, but it's a slow process. It wouldn't be in place for at least a year or more.
My solution doesn't work for the owner's financial plans?
Yeah. So what we have before us could be re, if the applicant, you're hearing us, is to possibly rework with the staff because there's quite a few items here that really are challenging. So, but this is the charge that we have, is in front of us. So let's move on what we, we know and go from there.
And then just, just, I kind of forgot about this. So I mean, one of the staff recommendations about the width not including the porch, you know, the, take the deletion of the omission of the porch, is that, you know, the addition walls, the main portion of the addition walls line up with the porch roofline, which, Sean, can you go back to the photo of the front, please? That one. You know, the, yeah, I don't know. You know, whether you think that that, you know, you should line up with that, the, the staff believes that you should line up with the house, that the actual wall of the house that steps in from that porch. So if you look at, you know, one of the site plan in the staff report, yeah, the main wall, not including the hexagonal bay, but, you know, so that's making it further imposing on the, on the street line. You know, I kind of, I, I prefer Sean's line that he's kind of made here, just as far as the width goes, just to line up. I just don't think that one roof, roof structure can, can count as the width of the, the whole house on the front.
But then it hits that setback. Anything else, commissioners? It's a toughie.
Actually, if you look at it, the proposed addition is about 36 feet 8 inches wide. The existing house itself without the porch is 36 9. So they're within, it's an inch less than the width of the house. It is shifted though. If you did want to move it back to where it's within what's showing on the blue line, then we would need to grant a side setback exception on the other side for whatever that distance is.
I guess I'm not saying move, I'm just saying make it smaller.
And I think that's probably what Sean is saying as well in general. Recommendation. Okay, with that, with that discussion that you just, statements is that, that's number two. The walls of the addition shall not be wider than the prime massing of the historic house.
I'll just throw it out. Regarding 1,000 Gilmore Avenue, I move to approve with staff recommendations.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed. The motion carries. I believe we need to take a break. So we're going to take a five minute. Thank you, public, for your patience.